Good evening, everyone. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, Virginia Beach Code 15-2, 1413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted on March 2nd of 2021, and Chapter 1289 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended, and by the authority vested as me and Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special session by electronic communication means of the Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, April 27th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. This special session by electronic communication means will be held virtually with the City Council members participating via audio/video conference. The purposes of this special session is for the City Council to conduct a public hearing to obtain public input regarding a proposed real estate tax increase. If you wish to make comments during the public hearing, please follow two-step process below. Register for WebEx at https://vbgovwebex.com, or registered with the City Clerk's Office by calling 757-385-4303 prior to 5:00 on April 27, 2021. The special session will be broadcast on cable TV, www.vbgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the special session by email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer, Mayor.
All righty. All right. Do we have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Lucci.
Present.
Councilmember Henley.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Moss.
Present.
Councilmember Rouse.
Present.
Councilmember Tower.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood. Vice Mayor Wood.
Present.
Mayor Dyer.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
At this point, I'll ask the City Clerk, Amanda Barnes, to read the instructions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. This is City Clerk Amanda Barnes. This evening's meeting is being conducted. Electronic plan is allowed as described by Mayor Dyer during his reading of the call for special session. Also, please note this meeting is being recorded. Mayor and members of Council, there are 20 speakers registered for this evening's public hearing. To ensure this live electronic event is successful, please note the following meeting instructions must be followed. Once the mayor opens the public hearing, I will call to the speakers in the order which they registered. Speakers will have up to three minutes to make their comments. If the speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next registered speaker. Speakers, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing. It is important that once your name is called, please wait two to three seconds to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself, and please do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feet is open at a time to minimize the possibility of echoing, and as such, you will not be able to hear a response. Mayor and members of Council, are there any questions about the process? Seeing none, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you to open the public hearing.
Okay, I now open a public hearing on the proposed real estate property tax increase.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker is Sonia Robinson. Is she on? Yep. So she does not appear to be online. I'll move to the next speaker, Diana Howard, and after Ms. Howard will be Christopher Francis. Ms. Howard, if you would pause two to three seconds, thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Howard. I am the Chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and I'd like you all to give the residents a break and reduce the rate to 98. The private sector has not fully recovered. Small businesses have suffered the most. We have been doing Tailgate Fridays to support local restaurants since the beginning of the lockdowns, and I can tell you that owners of these restaurants have been waiting on tables while paying unemployment benefits for employees who have not yet returned to work. Small businesses are barely making enough to survive. 1,183 have closed for good since the lockdowns began. We appreciate our public safety personnel, especially those who work here and live elsewhere. They do so because we pay higher than other cities in our region. If we lower the real estate tax rate, they might choose to live here as well. Of course, Norfolk has proposed an 8% increase for police officers, which, if passed, could make them higher than us. We should defer any additional compensation adjustments until the total market survey is completed, since the city manager said he has 2.5 million to manage any critical shortfalls in the police department until then. Our state employees continue to come to us for parity with city employees, even though it is not our job to supplement their pay. They should lobby the General Assembly and the governor to adequately fund them and put their equity talk into practice instead of wasting our tax revenue on their pet projects. The General Assembly also hit short-term rentals with a 1% increase transit occupancy tax for regional transit. You should absorb the $200 rental fee out of the revenue that they generate and give them a break as well. In addition, only the SOL positions were funded by the state mandating a 5% raise with a 2% local match. While it's up to the school board to determine how to use the revenues from the funding formula, we do not have to give them 69 million in debt capacity to accelerate school construction when we have needs of our own. We don't have to let them keep reversion funds, but we always do. So schools could have put all of that into their CIP, but they didn't. So we have stormwater funding issues to contend with. We need that debt capacity. While I appreciate the city manager's efforts to give everyone something, we should not be giving raises to public employees if we have required residents to pay more in taxes due to increase in real estate assessments. Councils should not be given a laundry list of additional spending unless they can offset it with reductions in other funding, like the 2% attrition set aside recommended by Councilman Moss. We need to reduce the real estate tax rate to make it revenue-neutral. Make the rate 98, so residents can also get a break. Thank you.
Diana.
The next speaker is Christopher Francis, and after Mr. Francis will be William Beavers. Mr. Francis, pause two to three seconds before beginning. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Chris Francis. I'm a firefighter with the Virginia Beach Fire Department, currently captain and have been for the past 19 years. I'm here tonight to ask you to please support Councilman Wood's proposal for the Public Safety Pay Initiative, and please support it in its entirety. I have heard that there's a possible recommendation to only fund or support the police portion of this, and I will ask you to please fund all public safety workers as a whole. We all work closely together. We enjoy parity with each other, police, fire, EMS, Sheriff's Department. You guys voted a few years ago to bring the Sheriff's Department in line with the parity, and I think it's very important that you guys fund this in its entirety. I'm entering into my almost 30th year on the job and have been contemplating retirement, and hearing Mr. Wood's proposal has definitely given me pause and maybe reconsider staying an extra three to five years, just based on the increase in salary. I don't think I'll be alone in that decision if this comes to fruition. Again, I hope you guys, when it comes time to vote on the budget, will support Mr. Wood's initiative in its entirety. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is William Beavers, and after Mr. Beavers is Van Oates. Mr. Beavers, please pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. William Beavers here, 16th Street at the Oceanfront. I spoke to you all last week, and I just want to reiterate again, you know, the tourism industry at the Oceanfront has been, you know, impacted quite significantly as a result of COVID. We had a horrible season last year, and we're just trying to get our feet together, and then all of a sudden, we're being told, well, now we're going to impose another $200 fee so that we can go after folks in the short-term rental space who are not doing the right thing. And I think taxing, or charging, or instituting any sort of fee on the hosts in Virginia Beach that are registered, that are doing the right thing, to go to pay for enforcement for folks who are not doing the right thing is frankly just capricious. I mean, it's not something that I'm willing to pay. And I will tell you that I'm on the Executive Committee of the Virginia Beach Short-Term Rental Alliance. We have over 300 members. We have a petition going with over, almost 500 signatures now, in support of an alternative proposal, which I've shared with your zoning commission folks, and we have shared it with multiple members of the Council. I strongly urge the Council to consider the alternative proposal the VBSTRA has put forth, and I'm strongly in opposition of a $200 fee, again, capricious fee, that goes to police folks who are not doing the right thing, and it puts undue burden on the folks like myself and the other members of the STRA who are doing the right thing. Why should we pay a fee to police those who are not doing the right thing? I sent you guys an email. All of my contact information is there, and I'd love to, you know, talk further with each of you and answer any questions about the Short-Term Rental Alliance and what we're doing. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input.
The next speaker, Van Oates, does not appear to be online, so we'll move to the next speaker, Virginia Wasserberg, and after Ms. Wasserberg will be Bill Curtis. Ms. Wasserberg, please pause two to three seconds. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and Council. I appreciate you having us speak this evening. I'm addressing you to request that you consider the reallocation of the proposed $69 million net increase of borrowing capacity from the school board's six-year CIP, and to reserve that 69 million for CIP flood mitigation projects. The school board has the capacity to invest 100% of their fund balance this year into their own CIP, and if they choose not to, I wanted to remind you that I have seen the City Council approve the school board into the year revision funds in the past for their capital projects, and I would be in favor of the Council approving those revision funds again if that $69 million is reallocated to CIP flood mitigation projects. The city absolutely has to fund public safety along with keeping people's homes dry, and the $69 million is an excellent way to start off doing that. It is also an excellent way to bring us into what we need for a bond referendum for flooding. So I ask that you really consider doing so and advising the school board to find their funds in their budget. I would also request tonight that you adopt a revenue-neutral real estate tax rate of 98 cents versus the proposed rate of $1.07, or about seven cents, and therefore give beach residents a break during a time when they need it most. And speaking of breaks for beach residents, as the gentleman spoke before me, I ask that you also drop the $200 short-term rental zoning fee. I had an opportunity this weekend to spend some time in a short-term rental in Sandbridge, and they're beautiful places. The owners do a great job keeping them up. Those that follow the rules do a good job following the rules, and they do not deserve to be punished for following the rules by having to pay an additional $200. On a separate note, I just wanted to say that I applaud your responsible efforts and the responsibility of the city manager at maintaining law and order in our city. Elizabeth City is my hometown, and I'm grieved over what's going on there, and I think they could learn from you all. So I know that's not budget-related, but I just wanted to throw that in there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your input and those kind comments. Thank you. Very thoughtful.
The next speaker is Bill Curtis, who does not appear to be online, so we'll come back. The next speaker is Elaine Fecetti, and after Ms. Fecetti will be Gerald Sandler. Ms. Fecetti, if you'll pause two to three seconds, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and Councilmembers. My name is Elaine Fecetti, and I'm back to provide additional information regarding the proposed short-term rental zoning fee. You are proposing, as Mr. Beaver said earlier, to charge a $200 annual zoning fee to every STR owner that is running responsibly, primarily to monitor those who are not. But it also includes a plan to hire FTEs, which would be deputized with police powers just to enter and inspect our homes on an annual basis before that permit would be issued, a waste of funds, manpower, and other reasons that are too many to fit in my three minutes. I and all the other responsible short-term rental owners are already paying for this service and more. STR owners pay management companies or take other measures on their own to ensure compliance with 241.2 and to monitor the homes while occupied. The majority of STRs are in Sandbridge, which are by right, so host compliance software is not needed. I referenced last week, the industry has evolved, and there is other host compliance software that is less expensive and more effective than the one in the plan. As a reminder, homeowners aren't the only ones profiting from STRs. The city tax revenue streams are as well, to the tune of tens of millions of dollars a year. Sandbridge pays 16.5% city and state on every rental, 2% from the state comes back to the city, on every rental, as well as $2 nightly lodging tax to the Oceanfront tip. Our sand replenishment is covered by it, our beach maintenance and all other expenses are paid for with this money. Even money goes to the advertising fund, but a large amount of it goes to the general fund. But also consider the real estate taxes that are paid on STRs. With the increased trends towards STRs, Sandbridge property values have increased from 209 million to 1.3 billion today, just from 1998. I see the frustration of the zoning and planning departments in trying to make this system work, but it is being done in a much less cumbersome ways than other cities. You need to find a way within the bounds of the law to have the Commissioner of Revenue share with the zoning at least the addresses of the STRs that pay the taxes. The fact that the Commissioner of Revenue cannot share this information is creating the need for more FTEs because of double work. You don't have a zoning problem with STRs. You have an interdepartmental and budget problem. None of you want to admit it, but the STR community saved the tourism industry during the pandemic, and this zoning fee is already being generously funded by our sales and real estate taxes. I am also in support of Councilwoman Moss's proposal to keep the real estate tax rate at 98. The state code requires a revenue-neutral real estate tax rate, and Mr. Moss has not only pointed this out, but has shown you how to make it work. The pandemic hit everyone. This is a way to help everyone. With the new ward system headed our way, I eagerly await everyone's vote on this issue as to whether you will actually be raising the rate instead of lowering it to 98. That gives everyone a raise. Thank you.
Elaine, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Gerald Sandler, who does not appear to be online, so we'll go to the next, Elaine Gordine, and then after Mr. Gordine will be Jerome Bell. Ms. Gordine, if you would pause two to three seconds.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Dyer and esteemed Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to briefly speak to you this evening. My name is Helena Gordine Thorpe, and I'm a resident of the Landstown Meadows subdivision. I'm here this evening actually wearing several different hats. First, I come to you as the chairperson of the City Council-appointed Library Advisory Board. Each year, the Advisory Board works with our exceptional director, Eva Poole, and her dedicated staff to maximize the resources provided by the city's annual budget. We all have faced difficult times financially in this country, but here in Virginia Beach, we can be grateful for the continued outstanding services provided by all our city departments to our citizens. Thank you, Mayor Dyer, members of Council, and city leaders for continuing to support the library and its vital services to the community on behalf of the Advisory Board. Another hat I wear this evening is as a retiree of the City of Virginia Beach. As a former employee of our public libraries, I understand how appreciative the current employees are that our upcoming budget allows for continued employment for our dedicated full and part-time staff who give their all to serve our citizens, from our youngest, the babies, to our seniors. Again, thank you. The third hat I wear tonight is as a resident for the last 37 years and a taxpaying citizen of the City of Virginia Beach. I understand the complex nature of completing a budget that is fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. Thank you for continuing to support the library that provides services to some of the most vulnerable residents of our city, those who without our services could not thrive. And the last hat I wear this evening is that of an avid library patron. I'm grateful for the opportunity to utilize the library's online services, browse its vast in-person collections, and obtain the help of its knowledgeable staff, all for free. Yes, I said, all for free. So this evening, Mayor Dyer and members of Council, again, thank you.
For wearing your multiple hats, thank you for, you know, contributing to our great city.
The next speaker is Jerome Bell, and after Mr. Bell will be Melissa Bray. Mr. Bell, if you'll pause two to three seconds, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. First of all, I'd like to say I am a Back the Blue, I'm a Back the Fire Department, and they all should get paid handsomely for what they do as first responders. Unfortunately, we can't continue to rob Peter to pay Paul. We have to be very responsible with the taxpayers' money. At a time when COVID has decimated our small business industry, a lot of these businesses have gone out of business and won't come back. A lot of parents have had to quit jobs to homeschool their kids because we couldn't get our schools open in an appropriate fashion so parents could send their kids back to school and maybe work. But as far as the property tax, you know, the current 2021 tax rate is 1.10175. That means that on a $250,000 home, the tax bill would increase to 2543. The Virginia Code 58.1-3321 states that if the assessments increase above 101% of last year's assessments, then the tax rate must go down a like amount, which reduces the current tax rate to 98 cents per 100. If City Council raises the tax rate above that, then it's a tax increase, and that hurts families. Any tax increase, in my opinion, is theft of individuals. It's just that simple, though. At the tax rate neutral rate, that $250,000 home's tax bills for '21-'22 would be $2,471.75, a savings of $72. And that's huge for some people. That $72, you know, is huge to some people who has lost their jobs and have to homeschool. But the city is proposing to raise the tax rate to 1.0075, which is a 1.90% increase. So I propose that you make the tax rate 98 cents, no tax increase. So, you know, I would hope that you would strongly take that into consideration, and that the real estate tax rate for '21-'22 cycle should be 98 cents per $100. Thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
Thank you, Jerome. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Melissa Bray, and after Ms. Bray will be Sarah Murphy. Ms. Bray, please pause two to three seconds. Thank you. Any comments? Having technical issues, we'll come back. Sarah Murphy, Ms. Murphy, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Murphy, and I am here in support of the public defender pay parity issue. I have been a public defender in Virginia Beach for the past four and a half years. I moved here after growing up in Pennsylvania because I got a job here after law school. My job is something I feel very passionate about. I love being able to help citizens of our community when they are at their most vulnerable and reallocate resources and help them get back on their feet. This is something I'm called to do, and in law school, I was fortunate enough to earn scholarships that made this job a reality for me, because unfortunately, this job doesn't really have the pay that one thinks of when they think of a lawyer. Even with my law school loans, however, finances can be a struggle. I've been able to put down roots in Virginia Beach, and I want to remain here and continue to contribute to the community, but it's not easy. It's something that I'm going to have to figure out as I grow, and if I can raise a family, and I know I'm not the only person in my office who has faced this dilemma. When I was even as a younger attorney, I'm still a pretty young attorney, but when I was just starting out, I had to rely on the institutional memory of this office. I rely on my coworkers for strategy, legal knowledge, training, knowledge of treatment programs, knowledge of resources that I can get for my clients. But when there's turnover, which happens because of a pay disparity, not only do we lose that institutional memory that those members of my office had, the attorneys that remain receive additional cases and then become more swamped until a replacement is found. I know that it is something that the office would be able to use in terms of remaining as a high priority, functioning, and making sure that our justice system is just and is striving for equality. And this is something, like I said, I want to be able to continue to do, and I would love to continue to strive to help our community. I thank you all for your time, and again, would just like to reiterate my support of the public defender pay parity issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service.
We'll go back to Melissa Bray. Ms. Bray, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you. I hopefully affixed my issue. I apologize. I, like Sarah Murphy, who just spoke, am a public defender and also a resident of Virginia Beach. I have been a public defender for almost 10 years, and I will tell you, when I first started, one of the difficulties in this position, I actually waitressed on the weekends and some evenings to allow me to do this job. And obviously, it's because I'm passionate about what I do. I believe in what we stand for, and obviously, this is a cornerstone of our criminal system. I think Virginia Beach remains a very well-functioning city because of the investment that our city has put into its criminal justice system. That includes the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and their supplement. Obviously, our law enforcement are critical to that, and we are the other side to that system. Having a public defender's office that is well-funded, appropriately funded, helps to build confidence in the city, for the citizens. It lets them know that they are a priority. We obviously represent a majority of the criminal defendants that come before the court in Virginia Beach, and we also represent a very vulnerable segment of society. So we have an opportunity to help link up individuals with mental health services, substance abuse resources. I have personally helped pick people up from jail and set them up so that they can go to rehab. And those are things that obviously I feel very honored to be able to do, but those are sacrifices that are not always easy to make. those are sacrifices that are not always easy to make when you have kids. Um, prior to having my son, it was a lot easier. The pay wasn't as bad. I could waitress on the side. Obviously, having a family that is no longer something I'm able to do. Um, and we just don't have the resources, sadly, to hold a lot of individuals. When people start having families, they find that they have to leave. I think since we've made the request to the city council for, um, parity, uh, we have actually lost two attorneys to our Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, two experienced attorneys. And that's obviously because they get paid significantly more. Um, I have trained attorneys in our office, fantastic attorneys, and they now work on the other side and make more than me, which is okay. We don't necessarily do this for the money. However, we need, it would, it's difficult to run an office appropriately when it's not funded appropriately. Um, when you have high turnover rates, um, as Ms. Murphy alluded to, um, you're continually reprocessing files, and that obviously diminishes the confidence that people have in our system. Um, there's a stereotype, the public defenders are overworked, they don't care, they're not going to talk to you, and I think it is important that Virginia Beach break that, that they know that that's not true. That's not how the citizens of this city feel about, um, the underprivileged. And so for that reason, I am in support of pay parity. Thank you and good evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Alisa Leonard, and after Ms. Leonard will be Conrad Shisventer. Ms. Leonard, pause two to three seconds, please. Please begin, thank you. She's having technical difficulties, we'll come back. Conrad Shisventer, and after Mr. Shisventer will be Max Gonano. Mr. Shisventer, please pause two to three seconds, thank you.
Melissa, how do I turn on? The button under on the right side, it should be lit up. Sarah's gonna help me. Okay.
Sir, please, Ms. Leonard, we'll come back to you. Mr., um, uh, Conrad Shisventer, if you'll please, um, go ahead and begin. Thank you.
I endorse suggestions from Councilman Moss. Keep our revenue-neutral real estate tax rate of 98 cents, allocate 5.9 million in accounted-for dollars to the total compensation study to boost pay of city police officers, reallocate 69 million in city borrowing ability to boost flood mitigation back from the school board, and retire the $200 short-term rental fee that exists among other STR taxes and fees. I'll add qualifiers. The real estate tax can hit hard, though it's progressive and eliminates many people like myself who don't have real estate and thus they don't pay it. Even though I don't pay it, I don't want you as a council body to lean on those Virginia Beechers who do own real estate just because they're there. By the way, a homeowner on Rose Hall is not the same as a 42nd Street Marriott owner on Atlantic Avenue. This stuff can negatively affect the affordability of housing in Virginia Beach, and rents are already cost-prohibited. I don't mind 5.9 million in accounted-for tax dollars being used to find a way to boost police officer pay, but I still want reform of city policing, and I recall the bloated $106 million yearly police budget. The funding can look rosy when you actually save the taxpayers' money. I won't forget, you guys voted 11 to 0 to throw 1.87 million at the police department from CARES Act funding that could have went for pay instead of cameras and ballistic software. Fungibility is concerning at times. Speaking of just moving money around, that 69 million in borrowing capacity reserved for CIP flooding projects needs to stay there. I'm a brickpost schools guy, and you can check my stance on school modernization submitted through the VBA questionnaire. And while I like the VBA when they're not suggesting a, a young Filipino progressive woman drop out of a Democrat primary in exchange for a moderate Republican school board member, and I like school modernization, flooding is a deeper concern. One damages property, one educates people, so one's a deeper need. And of course, for people who own property from San Bridge to Bayside and all Virginia Beach places around, they should have more leeway in how they rent out their property for the short term. I like the idea of reducing the homeowner cost. Thanks for listening, city council. Let me know when you want to be on the Beach Brother Show, and for cool vacancies for commissions and boards, I'm right here. Good night.
Thank you, Conrad.
We'll go back to Ms. Leonard, Alisa Leonard. If you will pause two to three seconds, go ahead and unmute her. Allow us to unmute you, please. Ms. Leonard, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor.
Ma'am, you have two devices that you are, um, using at the moment, so we're going to need to come back to you if you will fix that issue. The next speaker is Max Gonano, and after Mr. Gonano is Diana Burke. Ms. Gonano, please pause two to three seconds.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, ladies and gentlemen of city council, and Mr. Dehaney. My name is Max Gonano, and I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Professional Firefighters, representing fire and EMS within the city of Virginia Beach. I come before you one last time this budget cycle to ask for you to support Vice Mayor Wood's April 12th proposal. By now, you have heard from literally hundreds of people who support this proposal in its entirety. It is a sensible way of addressing compensation issues in public safety along with retention and recruitment problems. It also maintains consistency and equity to careers where your employees literally risk everything. This has been council's previous policy and priority, and it should stay that way. In 2018, when city council voted to bring the sheriff's office into pay parity with the rest of public safety, the vote was 10 to 1. Not surprisingly, the lone dissenter is dissenting on this plan. While I may strongly disagree with his conclusions on the matter, at least he is being consistent. In all facets, your public safety has gone above and beyond and faced increasingly challenging circumstances, and they've been doing it for years. Yes, some other industries have been hard-hit by the pandemic, but as you are aware, many others are red-hot right now. At this point, I am sure you all are tired of hearing about it, and quite frankly, we are tired of talking about it. Between the pandemic response, vaccination clinics, civil unrest, and the public's increased reliance on emergency services, unfortunately, the business of public safety is booming. We have taken these challenges head-on and continue to do so every day. We ask you to continue city council's historical support for Virginia Beach public safety, and please support Vice Mayor Wood's proposal. Thank you for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you, Max.
The next speaker is Diana Burke, and after Ms. Burke will be Daphne Stagg. Ms. Burke, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, as well as the rest of city council. First off, just thank you so much for all you do each and every day, and I'm going to keep this very brief. I think we've sent two different support letters within the last week that I would just bring your attention to. Um, if I can just say ditto to the last gentleman who was on, he said everything I would like to say in such an eloquent way. Public safety is, is just a huge concern for all of our citizens and our guests, and definitely the tourism industry. So we are very much in support of Vice Mayor Wood's proposal when it comes to safety. Um, and, and I hear again, I would just bring your attention to our support letter that we sent last week. In addition to that, um, we're a sports town, and tourism, we are so fortunate for all the experts and the support we get with the venues and our wonderful CBB team and everyone related to the sports tourism market. If I could bring your attention to the Parks and Rec request, which unfortunately did not make it into the city budget, I think it was a $188,000 request for Wi-Fi at the Pack Field, City View, I believe Mount Trashmore, and, and a few other areas within the city. I would so appreciate your consideration of adding that back into the budget during reconciliation during that process. And again, just thank you so much for what you do, and, and tourism does depend upon the decisions that are made in the next few weeks, and we look forward to seeing what the fiscal year '21, '22 budget looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Daphne Stagg, who does not appear to be online. Robert Dean is not online as well. Thomas Patrick, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Thomas Patrick. I am a retired judge of the Virginia Beach Circuit Court, having served 23 years in that court. I am speaking strictly on my own behalf, not for the other judges, and not for the circuit court. I actually had permission to speak with you all to, on a subject that I think is very, uh, clearly in the manner of justice. Uh, in my 23 years in sitting in the circuit court and handling trials and hundreds of jury trials and thousands of bench trials, I had the opportunity to see the performance of the lawyers, uh, throughout, obviously. We are blessed to have exceptional prosecutors and blessed to, to have really great public defenders. And quite frankly, I was shocked to hear, uh, at some point in my career, that the public defenders are woefully, uh, underpaid. Uh, they zealously represent their clients, they represent the other side of the judicial justice system, and I believe by my unsophisticated count, I would say they represent 70 to 75% of all criminal defendants that come through our court system. And they make significantly less money than the public defenders. And the reality is that the, they have some really good public defenders who actually leave the public defender's office and become prosecutors. I mean, think about that for a minute. Your defense lawyer suddenly becomes a prosecutor, and they're not leaving because they don't necessarily like their job, they're very zealously representing their clients, but they are doing it because of financial reasons. I was particularly surprised, uh, when one of your, one of our public defenders just mentioned she waited tables on the weekends. I mean, that's crazy, after three years of law school. And I will tell you that I hope none of you qualify for the public defender, but if you ever do, you're going to be in good hands because they take good care of their clients. They have a significant mental health docket, and in the news media recently, it's recently mentioned that the mentally ill are like three times more than they were before the pandemic started. So it increases the docket, but they, the public defenders are well-suited to handle that crisis. And there's one particular public defender, I won't mention her name, who, uh, we generally refer to as the best, uh, counselor in the city because she knows so much about mental health and how the law relates to them. So to me, it's a fairness issue in the public defender parity matter, and I'm not, uh, as I said, I'm just speaking for myself. Uh, they're all, the ones that I've had are excellent trial lawyers, and some of the best excellent trial lawyers go to the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, which I think, again...
Much appreciated.
We'll go back to Alisa Leonard. Ms. Leonard, if you would pause two to three seconds, you are unmuted. You may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I apologize for the technical difficulties of earlier. My name is Alisa Leonard. I am the deputy public defender in the Virginia Beach Public Defender's Office, and I'm here in support of the pay parity issue. I joined the office in 1998 as an entry-level attorney and currently serve as a deputy public defender. I won't belabor you with the numbers and dollar signs regarding the drastic and glaring difference in pay between our office and that of the Commonwealth's Attorney. You've seen the disparity that exists, even though we are in the trenches across from them every day, fighting the good and necessary fight for our respective sides. What I will speak briefly to are the issues we have with attracting and retaining dedicated, skilled, and effective attorneys to serve the citizens of Virginia Beach. As echoed by my colleagues, as the deputy in the office, I've had the hard conversations with dedicated attorneys who tell me they have no choice but to move on. They need more money, they have student loans, they have families, and as much as they wish they could stay, they just cannot afford to. I've seen the attorneys that fight to stay struggle with debt, struggling to make ends meet when they have an unexpected expense, but hanging on to do this vitally important work. I have been that very attorney, and but for the blessing and financial assistance of supportive family members, I would not have been able to stay here. I feel the difficult conversations from panicked clients who have to be assigned a new attorney because the one they've already built a relationship with and have confidence in is leaving. We pour a lot into the attorneys that work for our office, we invest in their training, their mentorship, their growth into competent and effective trial attorneys who daily put in the hard work for the citizens of this city and whom, in whom I will gladly brag about their efforts and their outcomes for the citizens and clients that they represent. But over the past six months, as mentioned by Ms. Bray, we have lost four attorneys, two secretaries, and a mitigation specialist in our office. Two of the attorneys resigning just this week alone, and today is just Tuesday. Each of the parties left because they needed to earn more money. Out of the four attorneys that we had leave, two went directly to the Virginia Beach Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. Might I add that the very fact that the Commonwealth would draft from our ranks tells you how good our attorneys are. The lack of pay parity for our attorneys is a major contributor to the rapid turnover in our office. Each time that happens, we have to start from scratch. We have to retrain a new attorney, a younger, although maybe eager attorney, but a less experienced attorney. Because of the lack of pay parity, it makes it equally hard for us to hire attorneys with years of criminal defense experience. And meanwhile, our clients deal with the fallout of all of that. But it shouldn't be that way. Our attorneys deserve more pay, and importantly, our clients...
Most appreciated.
Robert Dean, Mr. Dean, if you'll pause two to three seconds, thank you.
My name is Robert Dean, and I'm speaking this evening as chairman of the Tiwata Libertarian Party, the third-largest political party in our nation. We are the party of principle, the party of freedom. The former requires ethics, the latter, the belief that we, the people, have an unalienable right to the fruits of our labor, those fruits that are taken away from us by force in the form of taxes. I won't bore you with numbers this evening, as I'm sure you have all thoroughly read both the operating and CIP budgets. There's an old capitalism expression that states, "To receive for services rendered, a fair remuneration, and not all the profits the traffic will bear." That simple philosophy needs to be implemented as a preamble to the taxpayers' budget process. Keep it in mind that while the private sector has suffered and has had to make, in some cases, draconian sacrifices, the public sector has continued to go to a job every day and receive full compensation and benefits. No citizen who elected council members to office denies the fact that services provided requires a stream of revenue, but it needs to be relegated to core services with the safety of the public at the top of the list. It's just like putting away money for a family vacation, and then during a rainstorm, you discover your roof is leaking. Do you go on vacation? Of course not. You fix the roof. It's called prioritizing. All other services beyond public safety are subordinate, and the notion of a selective group of employees receiving an eight-and-a-half percent pay increase in simple terms is pandering for votes for the next election, a shameful initiative. The proposed budget submitted, submitted by Councilman John Moss provides adequate revenue streams to fund the 2021, '22 budget without any tax increase. In closing, in simple terms, make the rate 98, no tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I'm going to go back and call and just make sure that the folks that, um, didn't, weren't online earlier hasn't...
Okay.
...joined. Sonia Robinson, let's just make sure. She has not, um, she's not joined. Van Oats, as well, is, is not online, and, sorry, I lost... Give me, I'm sorry, Bill Curtis, is Mr. Curtis online? No, don't see him either. Gerald Sandler, do not see him either, and Daphne Stagg. So Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, I want to thank all the council members who participated, but also the people that took their time, uh, to give advice to our great city. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.[1755.83]